I'd like to call this meeting to order, Ellsworth Planning Board, August 2nd, 2017, 7:00 PM. First, well, before we start, let us introduce ourselves.
John DeLeo.
John Fink.
Jim Barkhouse.
Vodjel Saj.
And Mr. DeLeo will be, is an alternate tonight, he will be voting because we have a bear quorum and for the applicants, I should note that we have just a quorum and if a vote goes, splits two-two, that constitutes a denial. So if you wish, you may withdraw the application for tonight without any penalty and be on for next month. Just issued the standard warning. First item of business is adoption of the minutes from July 5th. Is there a motion to adopt additions or corrections?
Yeah, Chairman, I'd like to adopt the minutes as they stand.
Is there a second?
No second.
Thank you. All in favor, please? Thank you. Next item of business is a sketch plan for a modification on approved subdivision plan and the creation of a minor subdivision plan and, and of a major use site development plan titled Our Way Holt Industrial Park Amendment for Danny J. and Teresa M. Queensland. The proposal is A, to split a 2.65 acre parcel off the Bucksport Road, tax map 26 lot 2, into two lots, both including one residential structure, and add two apartment units to the existing duplex. And B, to split a 3.72 acre parcel accessed off Our Way, tax map 26, lot 2-4, into two lots, both including a residential structure in the urban zone. Is someone representing the applicant, please?
Steve Salisbury.
So, tell us what it's about.
We, your executive summary isn't quite accurate.
I just read what is on the agenda.
We're, we're taking six and a half acres in a previously approved subdivision, lot number one, and dividing it into four different parcels. The second part of the application is correct, we're converting a building that contains two living units into four living floors under the site review process. All the building structures exist, there'll be no, no more improvements made to the property?
No, no, when I open, excuse me, when I, oh, trouble hearing? Uh, I don't know that we can do much about that, because we, there's plenty loud for us to hear, if you can speak even louder, that would be nice if possible. So.
So, no, no more, no additional improvements, no more road is needed to be built? We just, the owner wishes to have the opportunity to perhaps sell one or two of these buildings and need to go through the subdivision approval in order to do that.
So this is just a land subdivision in that case?
A land subdivision in that case, yeah.
That does make it easy, at least for us.
Yes.
Is there anything else? Let me ask, are there any questions from the board members? Any reactions to this?
I have one for Steve. Under the project overview, Steve, it says the site will contain four multifamily apartment units, which is a little confusing here, each, is it going to be four apartments?
Lot number one, referring to the plan.
Right.
There's two existing units in that building, residential units, and he's going to put two more in to make a total of four. Yeah, I think it just reads, it's fixed.
Yeah, I mean, it kind of reads that there's going to be four units for multiple families.
That's right, multifamily housing.
Okay, but only one family?
In each unit.
Yes.
Yeah, it just reads, just reads right.
I know, it's the building, you're going to be adding units to the building.
That's right.
Isn't that a subdivision of the building then?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so it's not just a land subdivision?
No, it's also going to be a site plan review.
Okay. Well, also, that comes under, comes under subdivisions, we'll help. Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. Any other questions? We're missing two of the biggest questions, you know.
I know.
You get off easy.
Better luck next time, right?
Well, you will be back. Just be prepared.
Totally. Okay. Steve, on your, on your subdivision plan? Yes. Which lot is it? Number one. It is number one. Yes. So you've, and it says on here it's only 5.59 acres, there must be another parcel that was added? Yes, they acquired a piece of the adjoining land. Of lot two or the other side? Of the other side. Yeah, okay.
And you'll have revised drawings for that, showing the total lot size?
That's what the plan is supposed to represent.
Yes, yes.
There's a lightly dashed line going across lot four, it says original lot boundary, Holt Industrial Acres.
Yeah, okay.
It just, they added that little dagger-shaped piece of land to it.
And there'll be no changes on the entrance roads?
No. Is there plenty of parking already, Steve? Yes. Yeah, there used to be a commercial building on lot 1-1. Is that the T-shirt, please? Yes. Oh, okay, okay. Back when Dan McClellan owned the property, in his campground store and the whole nine yards, in that building.
Now, Steve, that lot 1-2, the driveway that comes out on the Bucksport, is that currently in existence?
Yes.
That driveway?
I got a few, uh, comments. Steve, on the agenda item, you said something was wrong there?
Well, from what, um, John was reading.
So if you take tax map and lot 26-2, is getting to two lots, that's correct, they're both going to be including one residential structure.
Oh, you go my tax map and lot number one?
Yes, so that's what I did.
Okay.
Okay. And then the other, I just want to make sure, because it was, it's a bit convoluted, and I just want to make sure that, because that's what I'm going to repeat next time. Um, the question for Steve, the house that is owned by Izolina Meeks?
Yes.
Which is, in this case, north, I guess, east of the, of 1-4, does she have a right-of-passage over the Our Way, does she have a right-of-way?
Yes.
She does. So, are you, did you think about, we kind of touched upon really quickly, did you think about how the Our Way is going to be, is that, because usually when we do a subdivision and there's a road that they all share, we ask that, that road be, have a road association to ensure that winter, winter maintenance and summer maintenance is done and that it does not come back onto the city. This is a non-standard, substandard road in the sense that it does not meet the, the standard, um, one could look at it, that portion of it would be seen as driveways, uh, so, and I, I looked at, I went to the road and it's kind of quite solid, the shoulders, it's just a paved kind of road, on the side it's quite solid ground, it's really well compacted. I, I, I don't have an issue with, with the way the vote's done, but I do wonder how, what's the intent of, if there's an intent to do a road association or not, how is that going to unfold?
Yeah, we'll address that at the formal application stage.
Okay.
We will do something.
Oh, and could you then put the actual city map and lot numbers on the plans? Since the agenda refers to the map and lot numbers, that would be helpful. This is a public hearing, anyone may comment on this matter. I ask that before you do so, you be recognized by the chair and then go up to the lectern and state your name for the record. Does anyone want to speak on this matter? Yes, please. Uh, no, please go up and state your name for the record, because this is recorded.
My name is E. Selena Meeks, I live at 9 Our Way, so I'm a budding owner. Um, I have a few questions. The first is the Holt Industrial Park, and is that in existence or no longer in existence? It's mentioned in the agenda.
Michelle?
It's just the name of a subdivision.
Yeah.
It's not.
It's not an industrial.
Representative zoning or it's used, it's just the name of the subdivision.
So it's no longer extant, it's just?
No, it is extant, but it's not an industrial use, it's just, the name continues, the use is not industrial.
Okay. Um, I guess I have a few questions, and one of them is access to these two new existing units. The road is a gravel road, which only recently, when the owner wanted to sell his property, he improved it, otherwise it was really potholed and in very poor condition. And the access to Bucksport Road is quite steep and a little difficult, I'd say, especially in bad weather. So I would like to see that paved in a better way, asphalt paving if possible.
This is not something that the planning board may require.
Okay, I, I, that's what I was questioning.
And that is also why Michelle mentioned the possibility of a road association to cover the maintenance of that.
I see, okay. That space in front there, that we're talking about, units 1, 2, 3, and 4, had been retail.
Uh huh.
Will that retail go away now, or is it just?
Well, this building will be residential.
So it's, no longer can be converted back to retail?
Hmm, that's a question for far in the future if it's ever brought up by an applicant, and what the zoning at that future time would allow. So, it's a hypothetical in a sense.
Well, it's right now a retail space.
Yes, which is going to be converted to living rooms.
To, to living rooms. Um, the city, I am assuming, will monitor the code changes within these buildings, or no?
Code enforcement officer is responsible for inspecting this, yes.
Okay. Is the exterior considered at all part of code?
Not, not unless there's any change to the exterior, that's proposed, any large change.
Will there be some changes for access?
That will be covered by the building permit, it's not the planning board, it's not something we have authority over.
I see, because I think there'll be new access, if there are two more units into that building, but I'm not certain of that.
I would assume, but it's not, again, that's not something under planning board purview.
Okay. Um, there is a piece there that is 0.71 of an acre. Do you require, when you're dividing, to maintain a one acre, or are you permitting that because it's in existence already?
That's in existence, well, it's grandfathered.
Actually, that's not, that's a proposed lot line around 1-3 at 0.71 of an acre, and I believe that the minimum lot size in that zone is what, Steve, do you know?
20,000.
That's where it's, which is, is.
Less than a half an acre, yeah. Less than a half an acre.
Yeah, less than a half an acre, so that meets the minimum.
It's above the minimum lots.
It's above the minimum, right, okay. This was mentioned, do these changes affect my right-of-way? My original right-of-way was across the property owner's, in front of the property owner's home. He requested that I put in a, a different driveway because he has several children and was concerned about trucks and traffic going through to that house, to my house. So I did that. Uh, now, this was a, an agreement for which we agreed to, to split the cost and for which I was not paid, so I, I have that, no, I just have that in the back of my mind.
That is a matter between you and the property owner.
Of course it is, except that the right, right-of-way, is it just granted, or is it specific?
It's, it's what is in the deed.
Correct.
Or any amendment to it that's, that's recorded and in writing.
Correct, so, so if the right-of-way was somewhere else, and it's now in another place, but it was not captured in the deed, it's still where it was originally?
Yeah, legally then it's.
So that needs to be taken care of when this all goes through, or?
That, again, will be between you and the applicant, the property owner.
I see.
It's not something that we have any jurisdiction over.
Okay. May I say something, Mr. Chairman? Although I think that if the gravel drive that is shown, which I expect is what is on the ground right now, if there's no deed at right-of-way, then they cannot show that. So that, that's definitely something that's going to have to, I think, to be ironed down by the applicant, because if they show a gravel drive, then we expect to have, any, any right-of-way on the property, we in the planning office will expect to see a corresponding deed with a language that shows that there's a right-of-way.
And the applicant is making a note of that.
So, yeah, so that's going to have to be straightened out, either, and I'm sure the applicant can work with Mrs. Meeks in deciding where they want it, but it's going to have to be straightened out, so we'll see to that.
Okay, it's good thing you have come.
Thank you for that. At the present time, the main house there is for sale, I don't know that it's been sold or not.
That.
Is that something we know, or can know?
Has not.
Has not, okay.
But, again, that does not affect this, this application.
Okay, what might affect this application is that the owner told me that it was being, might be sold to somebody who takes care of older people. Uh, there is a pool in that building, and I was concerned that it might, he might be wanting to make it into an assisted living, and whether or not that is something that you would allow.
That would be a change of use, and it would have to come, depending upon the square footage involved, either comes here or goes to a code enforcement officer, so.
But it's for sale right now.
It doesn't affect this application.
So it could not be sold to someone who wants to make it an assisted living?
No, no, I didn't say that. That person would then have to apply to the city for that change of use.
Oh, that person would have to.
Which would either be granted or not, depending upon whether it meets the requirements of the ordinances.
I see.
Not to get too much into the weeds, Mr. Chairman, but I believe that that house could not be offered for sale if the sale includes the proposed lot line, you can't.
Ah.
So, I mean, I think in this case it's really a technicality, but if you go by the law, you can't offer something for sale, sell it, convey it, and even offer it for sale in a subdivision that has not been approved.
Oh.
Because that's misleading, um, in this case, he could offer it for sale on the same lot without that lot line, but if he's offering it for sale, showing that lot line, that's not legal. I don't think it changes any, anything to the comment that Mrs. Meeks made, but I just want to be on record to say that.
Thank you, gentlemen, that's all I have.
You're welcome.
May I add one more thing?
I was just asking if anyone else wishes to speak. Hearing seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing on this issue. Yes, go ahead, Michelle.
If I may, um, just, just to not, just to be clear in that it's understood, there's no design review standards, as you know in the ordinance, so that the planning board doesn't address the looks or the facade of a structure in this case. And the court enforcement officer, as well as the fire inspector, will make sure that health and safety is met through the fire cone and through the building cone, but in terms of how the structure is going to look, is not within the ordinances, with an S.
Any other questions from the planning board? In that case, Steve, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item of business. I noticed you're not moving.
No.
It's another sketch plan for a major subdivision titled Twin Hill Courts, for Roy Lees. The proposal is to create a 12 lot cluster land subdivision off of Bucksport Road on a 140 acre parcel, tax map 46 lot 19, in the drinking water zone. Is someone representing the applicant, please?
We would like to do a cluster subdivision on this property. Um, it's going to change, the, the entrance is going to change from being on move one to being on Atlantic Highway. So the road that I showed running to the west will just extend out to Atlantic Highway connected in there. We, we talked to DOT last week and they, they denied their application for entrance, but we have frontage on Atlantic Highway of like 400 feet, so that'll serve the purpose.
But the lots would stay in the same place, it's depicted on that?
Yes, that's right, it'd be at the end of the road instead of the beginning of the road. Steve, is there going to be any more development into the common area? No, the common area will have to be restricted against further development to meet the standards of the ordinance. I was just wondering, because of the way the road was sketched in, instead of a cul-de-sac, you have kind of like two roads riding on it? Just a T hammerhead turnaround. Okay. But there's no intent to extend the road further to the east, comes pretty steep. Now, you're proposing wells on each site? City water and private sewers on each site. Okay. That takes care of my 100 foot septic question. Yeah.
And it also mentions in the application that each site would have a reserve area that would be written into the deed for an event of the first septic system failure.
Yeah, we'll map the both sites.
And I assume that each of those septic areas will have its own HAG 200.
I don't think we're going to have HAG 200s, we'll at least have.
Soil test.
Soil's test and report from the soil scientist indicating capacity on each site.
Okay.
Soils are really good up there, fortunately. Steve, is there a hydrant nearby? Uh, there's actually one nearby in, at the intersection of Atlantic Highway move one, but we'll put one in our subdivision somewhere near lot one. Okay, for the fire protection? For fire protection.
Is the applicant looking at some point for this to be a city road?
Potentially, yes.
So the whole road, access road will be up to city standards?
Yes, it will.
Have you seen the TRT notes about the road name?
Yes, yet to be determined.
Right. Further questions at this point from the planning board?
Steve, you're going to do road maintenance agreement? Yeah, we'll do a homeowners association with a maintenance agreement on the road, until such time, it becomes a city road if it ever does.
And does the homeowners agreement include the common area, is that something that everybody?
Yes, that'd be something, they'll be responsible for paying the taxes on and whatever maintenance needs to be done.
I saw some discussion from Larry Gordon, the tax assessor, about that this lot is currently in tree growth.
Yes.
And does the common area come out of tree growth also, or just?
Yeah, I think it'll have to, unless they choose to put it back into tree growth.
Uh, there won't be, will there be anything in the deeds about what uses are permitted in the common area?
Yes.
Once again, this is a public hearing, does anyone wish to speak on this matter?
I would like to.
Please come up to the lectern.
Good evening, my name is Susan Walsh, and I'm speaking as a property owner immediately adjacent to this proposal. Uh, I guess you already touched on the, my one concern, which was the water, and you said that it would be put on city water?
That's correct.
All right, that, that was a very big concern for mine, for mine, because I know on my property, our, we're on city water as well because of contamination from an old filling station out there. Uh, I also organically farm my, my lot, and I'm concerned about anything that might go on with this development that would compromise my ability to continue to do so. Um, and I'm not sure what that might be, or how to address that, but I guess you said there would be a common area and that there would be some restrictions on what could be done with that?
That's right.
Okay.
Where is your lot?
23 Atlantic Highway.
Okay, so that's coming in to the.
Yeah, it says, the first half, the first half says you're going down that road. I guess I'm just very concerned about this development going in and looking for some kind of reassurance, is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? In that case, I will close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not aware of the contamination, but I'm definitely going to look into it just to see what that was all about. Do you know, John?
No.
Who's that?
The one. I don't recall a service station here, but that might have predated me.
It would have been, the, the service station, it was used to call Wheeler's Filling Station, and about the time Route 1 was straightened, that would have been closed. Uh, when my ex first, when he closed on the property, found out that the tanks were still on the ground and had them removed before closing, the tanks appeared in good shape, but my brother does groundwater remediation, he tested the water and found some contamination. Uh, we hooked into city water ourselves, so.
But the former filling station is on your property? Yes?
Yes, yeah.
Is there still some contamination on the lot, on the ground, in the water? Is there still some contamination there?
Well, we haven't had the water tested recently, but, oh, yeah, we hooked into the city water soon as they were coming up by there.
Okay, so you're on city water right now?
We're on city water, yes.
Okay, okay.
Just for clarification, you saying that that fill station or that station was on your lot on 23 Atlantic Highway?
That, that was, that was the property, yeah.
Okay.
Fill station back in the fall, it's too good if you, let, let us know that I opened it to public hearing and it on record.
And come to the.
Yes. Uh, planning board have any other questions? In that case, this is a public hearing, does anyone wish to comment on this? Well, we might as well have some additional here.
The filling station you're talking.
The filling station you're talking about, my name is Del Gaspar. I own the land below where the place is being built. And the filling station you're talking about, I think his first name was Harry Wheeler, and it was back in the 40s that it closed. I know I used to hunt there all the time and I don't think he ever pumped a gallon of gas after the 40s.
If that will help you or any what she wants to know. Okay, thank you. All right. And my questions were answered when he told us that he was coming out on the Atlantic Highway.
Now, of course, you just dated yourself, Dylan. You just dated yourself.
Well, I'm proud of it, yeah.
That's a bit for my time.
Okay, Steve, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we, of course, look forward to your return. This next item is modification to an approved subdivision plan titled Joy Woods at U.S. Route Number One for Stephen and Anastasia K. Joy. The proposal is to split the 13.27 acre remainder of land into two lots, tax map, this is tax map 133, lot 14 dash one and tax map 126 dash one in the urban zone. And Mr. Joy, you're representing yourself.
I am. Also like to thank you all for volunteering your time to the citizens of Elsrich on a nice August night.
You are of course.
Glad to see four of you there.
There is a vacancy for an alternate unit. I just throw that out.
I just got the feathers off. I got out of here four years ago, eight years ago.
Okay. So why don't you tell us what this is about?
What I would refer to as the remaining land or lot number seven is just being split to sell the remain, that lot two in a butter.
Uh huh.
So what I'm selling is lot 7A and lot one.
And then one, then, oh, those are not contiguous, the two of them.
The remainder, 7B, those are not contiguous. It's one lot, but they're not contiguous, yes.
Mr. Chairman, for the purpose of subdivision, even though they get bisected, they're still going to be one lot. And that's why we ask for that arrow hook to be shown because that division, even though it looks like a division, it's not a division under subdivision. Back into the weeds, I guess.
Yes. Okay. Any question? How will you access seven?
Access.
7A?
Or 7A or 7B?
No, 7A.
Yeah, 7.
A.
A. He has a right of way with the campground and that sort of thing.
He's in a butter, he's getting something in a butter.
Yeah, he must be.
He can also access it through the right of way that's off here at Road.
So the butter, Steve, is L J N?
Yes.
Okay.
I know, that's, it's L J N LLC.
LLC, yeah.
Okay. Okay, now that makes sense.
Steve, according to, is there two lot 7Bs?
Mm-hmm.
There's only one lot 7B, but there are two parcels of land.
John, I'm going to tell you to go to note number nine on the left-hand corner of the plan. That's a new note that's been added. Under subdivision, sorry.
Go ahead.
Under subdivision law, so the remain, he's dividing the remainder of land. He's creating a new lot line, so just because of that lot line, he has to come here. That lot, that 7A portion is being conveyed to the butter. That should not have to come to subdivision. But because he did not convey the entire remainder of land and did de facto created a small remainder of land, he has to come. The second thing that's happening is the way, the remainder of land is not divided, even though it's bisected, what's now the new remainder, even though it's bisected in two pieces, under subdivision law, the state of Maine, it is still one land, one piece, one parcel. It's, he has not divided that parcel. He could come, he could have come tonight and said, wanted to create two parcels, but he has not. This is, the remainder land is the remainder land and is still one parcel even though it's bisected in two. Yes.
So if he were to sell it, it would have to sell his, the two parcels?
Correct.
Unless he divided it.
Correct.
Okay.
Does anyone wish to comment on this matter? Public hearing is open? No one wishes to comment? Public hearing is closed.
I would also say just to help in the confusion and whatever else, if you look at note number six also, should I, should I decide to add some of 7B to lot two? I've got to come back to do that.
Oh, yeah.
So, and I know you know that too, but I'm just saying, and I'm not saying I plan to, I'm just saying if I do or wanted to, I would come back. So, and that's, these notes are included in the deed when I sell this, so. I know it sounds weird or looks a little weird, but it's.
It's all right.
I think it's not, it, it does work.
I don't see any problems except for you, perhaps.
Well, exactly. Having to come back again.
We always love to see. Is anyone prepared to make a motion on this or since our prime motion makers are not here, are you in a force move?
Could be a form of a motion.
I'll try to do it.
Oh, okay.
Now, Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the modifications to the approved subdivision plan titled Joy Woods at U.S. Route One for Stephen and Anastasia K. Joy. The proposal is to split the 13.27 acres remainder of land parcel into two lots, tax map lot 133, 14 dash one and 26 dash one in the urban zone.
And let me add that this is in accordance with the subdivision ordinance, chapter 28.
Sounds good.
Is there a second?
I'll check it.
Is there a discussion? Any on, all in favor, please? Thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome. And you can turn your meter off so you don't have to bill yourself. Next item of business is the final plan for a major use site development titled Main Storage Plus for Mark Remick, Remick Storage LLC. The proposal is to extend the Main Storage Plus business located off Route 1A, Bangor Road to the northwest by constructing a total of 13,500 square feet of new self-storage units consisting of three 4,500 square foot buildings on a 2.1, 2.1 acres of land, tax map 58, lot 20 in the urban zone. Access will be through the existing facility from Route 1A. Is someone representing the applicant, please?
Andrew McCullough representing the applicant. The, based on our discussion at the last meeting, I believe there were just a couple issues that needed to be addressed. And one of those issues was meeting with Mike Hangy and/or the fire chief to discuss a lettering scheme so that in the event of an emergency, there was better direction on where that, what building it, they needed to respond to. And so Mike proposed a scheme with some signage at the entrance identifying certain buildings, buildings A through, A through H to the north and I and J and/or potentially K in the future to the south. And so on the plan that we prepared for you for final, we did note the lettering that will be assigned to each building. And so, an exact placement of that lettering will be in coordination or in cooperation with Mike Hangy and/or the fire department. The other item that we had discussed was shortening the level spreader so that there was a minimum of 10 feet between the end of the level spreader and the property line, which was done. So we have a 20 foot long level spreader on the plan. And in discussing this with Michelle, the question that I'm not sure if she or I were completely, had a perfect answer to was whether the level spreader itself is an outlet structure or whether the end of the pipe is the outlet structure. And so we prepared a request for a waiver so, to permit the end of that level spreader to be 10 feet from the property line. And again, as, as we discussed at the last meeting, it's not our intent that water will be distributed out through the end of that level spreader. The level of the water is going to run to the southeast into what is a drainage, existing drainage ditch. So just to try to make sure that any potential questions were addressed, that is.
Michelle? My, my research, my research showed that the level spreader can be considered an outlet structure.
The level spreader itself is a structure?
Excuse me?
You're saying the level spreader itself is a structure?
Could be an outlet structure. I mean, that's like, there's a lot of literature on that and it's not like, but so it could be considered.
What does our ordinance consider it?
It's not clear. So, but in this case, I think what's important here is that even though it does not meet, it's clear that with the grade that the water is not intended to go on the property line.
What, and the setback for a structure on the zone is?
There's a setback in this case for an outlet structure, which is 20 feet, if I remember correctly, is that what it is? It's, it's not 10 feet. It's.
Okay.
20 feet. So we don't define what it is and I think there's a lot of different ways to see this, but in this case, I think that anyways, from where I sit, it's clear that maintenance can be done without going on the other property. In addition to that, more important.
But if this is a setback in the ordinance?
It's not a setback. It's a, it's not called a setback. It's called a, it's just in the, under 10 or 3.9, it says outlets shall be stabilized, et cetera, et cetera. Outlets shall not be located closer than 20 feet of a property line.
But what is the setback for a structure, a house, a garage?
In that zone?
Yeah.
Structure has to be, what's the square footage? First of all, there's a square footage.
I, I believe it's five feet. I mean, that's what I have on my plan.
The square footage of the spreader is 160 if you need that.
What's the zone we're in again?
This is the urban zone, I believe.
It's in the urban zone?
Yes, it is.
So the urban zone is side is five feet.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if it's, not sure if it's considered a structure under our definition.
Okay, right, that's what I want to, because if we're a structure and it were, say the setback were 15 feet, for example, we could not issue a variance. That's the appeals board. And since this is not a variance, I feel much better, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
It was the first thing I wrote down when I was looking this over.
So the other thing I just wanted to say is that in the minutes, it shows that you were going to find out the hours of operation. Not sure if you found that out.
Michelle, could you go over, I mean, according to the definition of outlet, it talks about outlets shall not be located closer than 20 feet of a property line. So why are you saying that should not apply in this case?
So it's not clear, I'm not an expert in stormwater, but it's not clear if a level spreader is an outlet or not. Someone could say an outlet is literally like a pipe, an outlet.
That is running in.
The, our intent with this language was that if you were going to direct water on someone else's property, you should not be at the property line. You should be setback somewhat. You should have a little setback. In this case, for me, for stormwater, it's clearly that the grades are not going to be shooting that water towards the neighbor, but it's shooting it back towards on their land. So for me, from that perspective, I'm happy.
But you also said it's not the intention for this level spreader outlet, whatever we're talking about, to go onto the other property. But I guess my question is, is if it does, what's the neighboring property's recourse? You know, how, even, even if something is not intended to happen, it's a possibility.
Correct. He goes, so I went to that, if you go by, by that property, you're going to notice there's quite a bit of grades completely going to the opposite side. I think that just from that position, it's impossible for the water to go up the hill. I mean, I don't know, I'm not an expert, but I think it's unlikely that the water could merge toward that property line. Is that correct? I mean, I don't want to.
It is. I mean, I mean, if you look at the contours, you know, they drop three feet right there just below it. And so that, that is really directing the water right into this, this swale that runs along that property line. And I mean, I feel personally, I feel confident that that water is, is not going to be going out through that onto the butter. And I, I believe the. And I, I believe the ordinance requires that we sign, or we, the designer, sign off that it was installed in accordance with the plans and...
You have that on the plan. I saw that.
Yep. And I'm, I mean, so I'm comfortable saying that I will go out there and ensure that it's not going to run out through this end and onto the butter.
So the other thing, John, that I'm not in strong, on strong grounds on is that unless something is defined in the ordinance, you have to go with a general definition. And from what I read, it's not clear if it is or it's not. It depends what state you're in. So, because it's not like you're going to pick up the definition of a, of a, in the dictionary and it's gonna have the right outlet if you want. You can look at it if you want, but... So when that happens, when something is great, we usually give the benefit. I mean, the way ordinance has applied, we give the benefit, the leniency to the applicant. So in this case, there were two things. A, it doesn't, it's not going towards the neighbor. And B, I'm not that on solid ground to tell you that a level spreader is an outlet.
Because one could construe that the end of the pipe is the outlet and the level spreader sort of is just there as a ground feature.
Because it's not supposed to be a concentrated flow. It's supposed to be a diffuse flow.
So the end of, the end of the pipe is greater than thirty feet from the property line?
I had trouble at the beginning having it like two feet from the pipe. I was like, no, that's not good. But...
Yeah. At some point, Andrew, if you can think of it and we can get together, I, you know, when this is built, show it, so I, show me to it, so I can understand this a little bit.
Right, yeah. No, that's fine. Yep.
You see, and...
I can show, send you to tons of level spreaders.
Dick, well, I mean, if you're, if you're honestly, I mean, of course, it's a gravel road, but some grading, really what turned out to be great examples, um, out in Sedgwick on the access that we did down to Walker Pond for the town. Um, it's off the Cooper Farm Road. Um, we did three, I believe, down that road and, and they, they're some of the best ones I've, most functional ones I've ever had. Um, they turned out great. But there, there are, there are plenty around Ellsworth here. And none are, no crystal clear ones are coming to my mind right this second, but I'd be glad to, yeah, lay out three or four examples and say, you know, if you wanna go look at them.
And the concern with what you're gonna see is that it's basically an earth structure. It's not like hardscape in the sense that concrete. And if it's not maintained correctly, if it's not installed correctly, it's never gonna work. If it's not maintained correctly afterwards, it may have a tendency of channelizing. Instead of diffusing the water back and letting it flow, it may, it may basically concentrate it and have some points where it comes out, and that's not what we want. So there's always some concerns with that type of structure from that point of view. It's very interesting, John.
So Andrew, you said the end of the pipe is about thirty feet from?
The end of the pipe is a minimum of thirty feet from the property.
So it stops at the south side of what's called the spreader, I guess?
Yes.
Okay. So that's why there's really no outlet. Okay.
And there are maintenance requirements for this.
There are maintenance requirements. Yes, there are.
So that is...
I get that.
That's the responsibility of the property owner. And if he doesn't maintain that, then the abutting property owner could sue. Of course, bring it to the attention of code enforcement, who would be... And of course, Blight isn't here to defend himself. Further questions from the planning board? Concerned questions? You're not trying to make Michelle nervous, are you?
No, no. I just have a little pain if I'm quiet today. I'm dedicated.
So we are at the point now where we have to make a decision regarding this project.
He's requested a waiver too. Do you have to consider that?
Ah, yes, we do.
He's gonna, I think you, I think they approved a waiver on lighting, right?
They did.
Yes, we did.
And it's a public hearing too.
Yes. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on this matter? Evidently not. We shall close the public hearing. Well, we've heard that the outlet of the pipe is thirty feet from the property line. And if that is the end of, if that is the outlet structure, then you don't need a waiver, right?
That's correct. It's a matter of interpretation.
Yes. And structure is not, in the ordinance, is not defined such as to include a level spreader.
I still believe it's a structure. I mean, an outlet.
You're doing.
I mean, so maybe it's not, but then what I'm gonna do is I'm definitely gonna do some major research on that to get some clarity, because it's, it could be a problem in the future.
Yeah, I would suggest...
What's the setback for a, a leach field?
Leach field?
Ten feet.
Ten feet, thank you.
It's a state thing, I suppose.
Would that be considered a structure then too?
Uh...
Because there's really no difference, right? You're diverting water one way or the other.
No, but the leach field has components in it that are permanent features. They're constructed features. You have concrete tanks, you can have concrete chambers, you can have plastic chambers, there are even more, which are easily defined as structures.
What, and, and it, when, when we, when we start down that road, it, it becomes, some towns definitely define things like leach fields as structures.
Because we don't address it.
We don't, City of Ellsworth does not address it.
I was just wondering the distance.
Some towns address the edge of a road as a structure, or a road as a structure. Some towns don't. So, so that becomes a very a varying issue as far as how does the ordinance define it?
So just, so we've cleared the ten feet he mentioned is state law?
Yes.
For the, for the, yeah.
Yeah, without a waiver.
Lots of laws.
Yes, lots of ways they interact. But, well, the way I would look is the, the pipe, the end of the pipe, I think it's clearly the outlet that can be defined as an outlet structure. If the ordinance then doesn't give a solid definition of a level spreader as a structure, my interpretation would be at this point, then it's the end of the pipe. That can be changed in the future.
Well, that's solid ground. That's the more lenient way to look at it in solid ground as well, from my point of view.
Yeah, we're allowed to disagree.
No, I agree with you.
Oh, okay. That's the way I personally look at it.
We're allowed to agree.
Oh my God. That could be bad. Anyway. So not, my feeling is that the waiver is absolutely, is not necessary, but that is the rest of the board. I just want to press...
I guess one more question, because I don't totally understand it. Is, is a level spreader a hole in the ground, or is that, is it? Or is it a tank?
It's not.
We're going out...
Metal tank, concrete tank?
Yeah, I mean, how do you build, how do you construct it?
Okay, you have a pipe, okay, I understand the outlet. The outlet's going to the level spreader. So is, is a level spreader...
We're gonna go on a trip tomorrow.
I guess I should've paid closer attention when I was on the TRT.
Yeah, for ten years.
Okay. So if this is natural ground,
Yep.
try to cut into natural ground maybe a little bit. And then we build this berm, if you will, twelve to eighteen inches high.
Okay, just out of dirt, basically.
Uh, you can build them out of dirt. What the plan calls for them to be built out of stone.
Okay.
Can grip wrap, say four to six inch stuffs, keeping it in still shape.
Okay.
And so you lay down the fabric and build this little berm. So the intent is that this water runs in and leads out down gradient. So there's an end to this, so that it doesn't go beyond the end. It comes into here, it builds up at times and leads through and then runs down slowly.
So that berm is the level spreader?
That berm is the level spreader. The berm.
Thank you.
I'm gonna send the whole board to Stormwater School.
No, no, no. No, you have to have the Stormwater School come here. It's easier for us.
I'll go visit plunge pools and and detention and retention bonds.
Now, that explanation, I would go along with what the chairman is recommending.
Yeah, because I see it the same way, is the pipe being the outlet and...
It's a dis, it's a dispersion device. It's a diffuse, yeah.
So do we have to agree on the spreader first?
No, he's requesting a waiver and we're saying that he doesn't need the waiver.
Okay.
So you're not gonna act on it?
No.
Do we have to vote on that?
No, I don't think so.
Maybe you could act, you're not acting on the waiver?
Yeah, we just put it in the final.
So it's clear that he needs to take it off?
Yeah, for my one. Yep.
Then of course you're, we're afraid to change your ordinance.
Well...
For the definition.
Well, I just wanna remark, the thing is that Andrew was gracious enough to, to move back the spreader away from the property line, but he had it at five foot originally. And if it had stood at, at five foot, I would have thought that it was an outlet, because that's not okay from where I sit. But since we moved it back, you know, reasonably, then I'm okay with it.
We are at the point of approving or disapproving this. We have declared that the application was complete last time, but for the working out of the addressing, which has been done. Uh, do you want to go through the application part by part? Or are you, is the board satisfied that the requirements have been met for such things as the Stormwater Management Plan, that it is okay and so forth? Otherwise, I'm prepared to do a dramatic reading of the ordinance. Go ahead.
I make a, uh, motion that we finalize the plan for a major use site development plan titled Main Storage Plus for Mark Remrick and Remrick, of Remrick Storage LLC. The proposal is to expand the main storage plus business located off Route one A, Bangor Road, to northwest by constructing a total of thirteen hundred, our thirteen thousand five hundred square feet of new self-storage units, three forty-five hundred square foot buildings on two point one acres of land, tax map lot fifty-eight slash twenty in the urban zone. Access will be through the existing facility from Route one A. And there will be no new waivers for this, for the plan.
No waivers necessary.
Huh?
No waivers necessary.
No waivers necessary.
And this meets the requirements of the subdivision ordinance, chapter twenty-eight.
Do we have a waiver for the lighting? We dealt with that last time.
It's not a subdivision. It's just a major use site plan. It's not, it's not habitable or usable structure in that sense.
I see, okay. That it meets the requirement of the site development ordinance, article six. When we determined last time it wasn't allowed use. And, okay, is there a second?
I second it.
Any discussion? All in favor, please?
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, who's second? Mr. Bark has raised his hand and he goes, okay. As long as you're all happy with this second section, I'm gonna be okay. Just wanna make sure, make everybody happy here.
You better say this quick.
See, the problem is now, there are two people on board with the same first name.
Oh.
And you spell it J O H N, right?
Yep.
Yeah, I can't even get with the spelling difference.
I know.
So next time you have a new board member, that board member may not have a name of anyone else, unless there's an official nickname. How's that?
Duly noted.
Write that into the ordinance. Okay. Next item of business is a preliminary plan for major use site development titled Route one eighty project for Birch Twin LLC. The proposal is to create a pad site of about ten hundred thousand square feet on a twenty-four acre parcel of the roots, off Route one eighty, Mariahville Road, tax map fifty, lot thirty-nine in the urban zone. Is someone representing the applicant, please?
Andrew McCullough, representing the applicant. What we are proposing to do, what this plan proposes to, to do is to utilize the fill that came off the State Street project essentially to create a pad site that would be suitable for future development. And so the entrance and of course, all this material is already there. The entrance that's been used is the entrance that Main DOT, or that was constructed under the Main DOT project when this section of Route one eighty was built several years ago. We have created this pad with a, about a one percent slope to the east away from Route one eighty. And what we have shown is earth and berms, if you will, about a foot high along the edge, so that the water stays on the pads, runs down the sides, doesn't spill off the sides, gets to the back and then it will drop through this, um, well, we've labeled it an outlet structure, but it's really a catch basin. Um, or it functions as an outlet structure and a catch basin. It drops the water down to the elevation of this underdrained soil filter. And this underdrained soil filter will, again, treat the water and then it will be run out into a level spreader. A couple of things that we discussed at the TRT meeting that Michelle asked me to show was the approximate limits of the inland waiting bird and waterfowl habitat. And frankly, we, we've shown it as conservatively, if you will, as we can. And to the best of our ability from a, a map that's at a very small scale. So we traced over the state map and tried, tried to show it as conservatively as we can. I, I mean, as from a standpoint of the, the city's perspective or the state's perspective. We also have shown the approximate limit of the residential zone boundary. And... And we have labeled the flood zone, the flood zone is elevation ninety-four. For this section, the, of the, or the Union River in this vicinity. And so we have labeled contour ninety-four as being the limits of the flood zone. So the stormwater is treated. I may have. And I, I know Michelle will chastise me if I did. I, we talked about putting a note that the slopes would be stabilized within six months.
That's not there.
And that is not there, but I will put that there for final.
It's on the TRT report though.
It is, and it just came back to my mind, so, because I see it's not there.
Did you include a note on the plan for the stormwater maintenance, management maintenance plan, I did not see it.
Yep, number seven.
As you did do that.
The owner shall inspect the stormwater collection system, yep.
Okay. And that's shown, so there's only note number three remaining really.
Now, what was that that's missing, so we're just making a note?
Note, note number three on the TRT on the orange, Dwight and I were both in agreement that, that we just wanted a note on the plan that this, referring to the soil stabilization seeding schedule. That would be done within six months of, what again? Okay. What Dwight asked for the six month? Andrew?
Of substantial completion, I believe.
Okay, the six months of substantial completion.
And I have question, Mr. Chairman, when you're ready. I just wanna, I noticed that there's a lot of slash and I did ask the, Andrew, and he told me that that was going to be either removed or chipped, I can't remember. Chipped. And there's also, I noticed that in the fill, there's a lot of culvert sticking out. Is that, that's all about stormwater?
No, I, I got that on my.
So, and I wonder if there's a lot more debris than what I just see from the road. Is this, do we, is the plan just to roll this over or are those removed or how does that take place?
I went up there today and it was the same thing, and that was a couple of questions I had, I mean, there's a lot of wood there that hopefully would not be buried. Everybody said it's gonna be removed, but there's also, you know, from that road project, I mean, there's chunks of metal, but there's also a lot of pieces of plastic culvert that are intermingled amongst the fill. And I mean, beyond that. You know. One big question I guess I would have is, is, okay, the material from the State Street project is piled in. Is there material from some other project, you know, some other project that Bridgestone and R.F. Jordan's did that, that they brought and dumped there? And, you know, is, are tests gonna be made on that soil to see if there's any contaminants in it? I mean, I'm not saying that he did it, but I mean, you know, perhaps a gas station fill was, was put on the lot. You know, we don't know, I mean, is there any way to, to conduct tests on it?
Well, I guess I would say, I mean, as far as a gas station fill or something like that. When those tanks are removed, there, there's a person on site that actually examines the soil and all soil that is, has volatile organics above a certain level. That is removed to take into wherever, to be burned or what have you. So, no soil can leave a site like that that has volatile organic chemicals in it. So I would, I would.
I think the statement is general though, is what is that, it's clear that that soil, you can drive by there at fifty miles an hour, well, the speed limit's probably not that, but. You can drive by quite fast and you do see protruding everywhere, just junk that is not soil. And I, and I have the same question, and John really is.
Hi.
What is, does this really, is, is, are we supposed to take this off or is this plan just to roll this over? And if there are, are there any debris from other construction sites, I would like to know that as well, I think it's a valid question.
Well, I, I, I cannot personally answer that tonight. I will, as far as what. We'll do, what he will do with any, like you say, culvert pieces, things like concrete can be buried, I mean, that's inert material. But as far as culvert pieces or anything that would be considered. Waste that, you know, has. That should go to a transfer station or be recycled or what have you. I, I will discuss with him and have an answer for you as to what will be done with that. I would venture to say that it would, or I mean. I would think that he would say if it needs to be removed, we'll be, we'll remove it when we're moving the soil to. Because it's not gonna be, I mean, where this, where the existing stockpile is, most of the soil has to be moved. I mean, it's not, it's not just a, it has to be moved literally. A couple hundred feet. And so, it's, it's not gonna be just a plain flat out, okay, we're gonna push, brush it off and call it good. So, I would say that they have the opportunity to be able to remove things that shouldn't be in there.
At the deepest point, how deep is that pile of dirt? Cause, and then what would happen is, and I, I really don't know, I'm just, you know, if this is like all the way to the bottom, that's, that's going to stay then. It's not what I would call clean fill. I mean, how deep, how deep, what's the depth of this pile, out of curiosity?
I mean, I, I didn't topo the existing fill to be able to tell, give you a really great answer. I mean, the fill, as I've, as I've proposed the grading plan, I have a fill of. Probably fifteen feet or something like that. But I mean, that material, I mean, where that material is gonna go, that's gonna be moved there, it's not there now at, at that depth.
Would it be also possible to consider staking the boundary of the sensitive resources, so that's not being filled up while they're doing construction?
Yeah.
I think that visually, it would be very helpful to stake it and flag it, or else it's just gonna, you know.
Oh, one other question I have, I mean, the contents of the fill, I mean, this is sloping down towards, gets quite close, you're quite close to the Union River and. Not too awful far from Gilpatrick Brook, which I know when DOT did the 1A project, US Fish and Wildlife was very concerned about Gilpatrick Brook and, because they're considered salmon habitat. Is this project, does this require, somebody call them, US Fish and Wildlife, say, we're this close to, we're doing this project this close to a salmon habitat?
No, um, we're. Because we're, we're outside of even the two hundred and fifty foot zone of the river. I mean, this, this stormwater is directed toward the Union River, so I don't think any of it's gonna head toward Gilpatrick Brook. As far as, I mean, the, the stormwater coming off the site will all be treated through the, treated if you will, through the underdrained soil filter. So, the intent or the purpose of the, the underdrained soil filter is to remove. Significant percentage of. Heavy metals and things like that. As well as to cool the water by several degrees, if you will, before it gets discharged through the level spreader. So, it. It, um. It will provide a level of treatment for the water that's coming off the site before it ever heads toward the river.
I mean, I. You know, if the applicant doesn't wanna do it, I mean, I, I would recommend that the city contact US Fish and Wildlife. I mean, for as strict as they were about. That 1A project and, I mean, all over, as, as strict as they are about salmon in Maine. You know, just a letter to them gives them a heads up.
So this is usually, it's a burden on the applicant and it's also in the ordinance that, that you do the letters to the state agencies? Have you done those?
I mean, if something goes to Maine Fish and Wildlife.
We did, um, letters to all the typical agencies that we, that we do, yeah, yeah.
Okay. I, I noted your, I've got, I got written down, John.
May I make a suggestion? That your client may wish to be at the final, just in case a question of this nature comes up again. And if it couldn't be answered, then it might hold the whole thing over.
Yep.
And so, it's just a suggestion.
No, I agree, yeah, because I mean, I, he's gonna have some of those answers that I don't.
Yeah.
Question for you.
Yeah.
Do you happen to have any ideas to when they started using this as a staging site for the debris dumping? When they started this?
Probably three years ago, I think.
No, no.
Not that long?
I, I will have to, I do, because I went up. And I originally permitted forty thousand square feet of impervious here. Now, this hundred thousand, under a minor conditional use. Now, this hundred thousand, I'm not saying that I are, it's not a hundred and forty thousand square feet. I'm saying that the hun- the hundred thousand is all of it. But I did obtain a permit for forty thousand square feet of filling under a minor conditional use. Now, I would have to look at, it was like January. Two thousand and fifteen, now there was no fill on the site besides what. Was done by DOT when they put in that entrance at that time. I can tell you that.
That's why I think it was used earlier than that, just because I have the.
So.
Well, there was January, according to the letter, it was January two thousand sixteen.
Okay, so it was January two thousand and sixteen and so then, you know, he got the State Street project June two thousand sixteen, or June two thousand seventeen. Or were August two thousand seventeen. So, it was June, January two thousand sixteen, there was no other fill there. Cause I, I, I think I took pictures, but I don't know for sure. But it wasn't, it, it wasn't even cleared at that point, cause I delineated the wetlands in the fall and walked through the woods and stuff like that. Whenever that minor conditional use, when I was preparing the minor conditional use. So after we got the minor conditional uses, when he then cut it off and.
Andrew, on, on the map, you have an area delineated edge of existing fill.
Yes, it runs off the property, because there was, he, he was not aware of exactly where that property boundary was when he started.
Is that being addressed or is that?
I mean, it's gonna be removed from that property, but he's, he's addressed that with the owner, yes.
And apparently the topsoil stockpile, probably main propane, be more than happy to keep that. Now, is, I just noticed that the edge of the existing fill fills in some wetland, is that?
It's less than forty-three hundred square feet.
Further questions?
Now, we have to make a request for a peer review? And it's up to the applicant to pay for that, right?
Uh, yep.
I mean, like John says, and you say, I mean, I go by there every day and I see the stuff that's in there, I don't like to do bring myself. And I don't wanna let this project through unless we know what's in there.
So a peer review would be, if I may, would be you would direct the applicant to come back with a report showing what you have. And if you don't find that that's satisfactory, or you feel you don't have the knowledge to judge the adequacy of the finding. Then you could call for a peer review to review what was, what, what's being presented. In this case, it could include going in checking things out as well.
Right, I don't think it's Andrew's responsibility, it's the applicant.
Well, Andrew presents the applicant.
Andrew can do it, he can pass the word.
So he's the applicant really, cause the applicant's representative. So if the, if the boy wanted to say, we want to feel that, we would like assurance that this is clean fill. Um, you need to demonstrate that, then it's the burden of the applicant to figure that out. We would work with them to figure out this.
I was gonna say, I think we'd have to sit down and say, okay, what, how are we gonna define, you know.
Clean fill and is.
What our definition is gonna be.
Correct, and this, is, is it a question of bear, and, and I think the question is not what is, the question is, is there anything in there that is of concern to the environment? That's the question. I mean, that if he wants to put whatever he wants in there, that's.
At least we know.
As long as there's nothing harmful. I mean, I don't know, I'm gonna have to look into it, I guess, I really don't know. I'm like you, Roger, I go by there, so it's hard to miss.
I do not have a definition of fill.
No, but we do have, in the ordinance somewhere, we do have something that says that there's always a concern about any debris to be taken off site. Or we always wanted to know where they're gonna be located, cause there's gonna be a rhyme and reason why that's important.
Well, that I think is when you're, in effect, digging up the soil that's already there. Well, that, I think, is when you're, in effect, digging up the soil that's already there. And the debris is created on-site, but this debris is already there.
There's a hole there, yeah.
And so...
They filled it up, yeah.
In which, I mean, it's still a concern. And, I mean, I think the applicant would be wise and nice to go around to tell us what this stuff consists of.
And we can work with the applicant to figure...
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a, I, I don't have a cut and dried answer as to, "Okay, this is how we can say, oh, well, this is..."
We're, we're not asking for that right now.
Right, right, I, yeah.
That would be...
No, you're not asking for it, and I, I, if I had it, I would offer it, and I don't, I don't have it.
Yeah, so, that's why there's next on.
We're just raising a flag.
Yep.
So, one of the things, too, that you want to look into your motion is to direct, I mean, if you want us to contact Fish and Wildlife Services, you need to think about that as well? Or directives, or I don't know if you're sure if it's a motion or a directive? And then maybe be specific of why we're contacting them?
Yeah. Now, we're here today to determine whether this plan is complete. Doesn't mean that all the questions are answered, but is there every, everything in here that's supposed to be here for the submission? And what I'm going to do is just briefly go down the submission criteria requirements, and if something's missing, yep. Application form, deed, construction schedule, cost, base plan information, name of development, et cetera, et cetera. Um, no monuments erected?
Uh, that boundary is pinned.
Okay.
But I mean, there's no proposed, it's already pinned, right.
Yeah, okay. Existing proposed con- conditions, existing site conditions, uh, sewer infrastructure and so forth.
Existing site conditions.
Yeah.
Would that part be part of the fill? We have to know what's in that fill.
Oh, yeah.
On which?
Oh, hold it, it, okay, well, the, what it requires is location and size of any sewer infra- sewer infrastructure.
They'll be for that, right?
No, no, there's existing site conditions. A is location and size of sewage, sewer infrastructure, water mains. Then, location and size of biolose septic, if it exists.
Yeah, so many.
Location and size of culverts and drains on the property. Location names, present widths of existing streets and, uh, intersecting roads and driveways within two hundred feet of the site. Location of open drainage courses, wetlands, I think that is covered.
Yeah.
Direction of existing surface water drainage, location, so there are no signs. What, dimension, height, location oriented of existing structures on the property on their use. Copy of maintenance agreements for any privately owned stormwater management. Tabulation of the number of acres and the existing development, including square, including biz- uh, structures. Copy of the Hancock County Soil Survey.
Uh.
And location and methods of disposing for land clearing and construction debris and emergency vehicle access. Those are the propos- those are the existing site conditions that are required.
So...
So, the question that...
This is soil, yeah.
I mean, is this construction debris, that which is created on the site, or that has been brought in? Do we have a com- I wonder if we have a, uh, definition of construction debris?
No.
Okay. That was quick. Goodie.
Non-existent.
Oh.
You can use the definition of the dictionary, Mary Mary. The Webster. The Webster, whatever you need.
I bet the dictionary doesn't have a definition of construction debris.
I mean, honestly, I mean, my thought of construction debris is, you know, what, the ends of boards that are sawed up, that are the ends of...
Yeah.
I mean, that's typically what I would construe as construction debris, right.
Do we know what kind of soil was there previously?
We, we do know what was there previously, yeah.
Yeah, I thought I said that in here, too.
Well, you brought in construction debris. Culverts.
Yeah, I mean, that's an interesting question.
Yeah, I know.
Again, it's hard to miss.
Let's not leave them hanging there. I mean, do we want, does the board want to see the location and nature of what, of the debris that's been brought in?
I mean, we have the extent, the, the toe was mapped in the field, and that's shown on the plan. I mean, as far as a description, I, I think you've asked the...
We've asked for that.
Yeah, you've asked for that.
Yeah, so, okay.
I think we should have site review.
I mean, a, a, a visit.
Review, yes.
Yes, I was waiting for the visit. Michelle?
Yeah.
Board would like a site visit.
Excuse me?
Board would like a site visit.
Absolutely. Would the board like to schedule the site visit tonight, or would just board like...
I don't care, I go by there every day. Oh, you mean schedule, yeah.
I mean, do you, is this possible for you to schedule today? Or do you need more time?
Yeah, well, it's...
We scheduled a site visit today.
So, we have, it's gonna be a couple of weeks, right?
Well, this is, this is the deal. If we, if we close the meeting and I schedule the site visit, that means the earliest it can happen is anytime after next Thursday. If you can find a date today, you don't close the meeting, we can have this earlier. It's up to you guys. If you wanna take the time to look at your calendars, I mean, it's not like anybody's waiting for us right now.
Will you watch it now, the flashlights?
Head, headlights.
Headlights.
Depends what you wanna do. If you guys could, would like to say, "Oh, we'll meet Friday," then we can not close the meeting and continue this meeting on Friday at the site, and it's done.
I, I can't do this Friday.
No, I'm just giving an example, anything.
Yeah, yeah.
Either tomorrow, Thursday, Friday's, not Sunday, not Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
I guess I'm pretty flexible Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
I'm available.
I'm retired, I don't know.
Would you like to...
Wednesday morning's not good for me.
Wednesday's not good?
Wednesday morning.
Wednesday after is not good for me.
How about Tuesday?
After two o'clock.
After two o'clock.
Okay, Tuesday, August eighth? At two o'clock?
Send, send us an email.
Yes.
Well, you guys have to make this motion tonight, so we're not...
Yeah, no, but just...
Yeah. Were you available Tuesday, two o'clock? Are you available, John?
Um, I am at this point, but that could change.
Hey, what's the date on that, the eighth?
Yes, it is.
I'll pencil it in.
Is there something else that you're sure you'd be available?
No, I work until I see my date.
Generally, early in the morning would work, but...
Would Wednesday, uh, eight-thirty work?
Not for me.
AM?
I would, no, everybody's not gonna be, I mean, schedule it for...
Thursday, eight-thirty work?
Yeah?
Yeah.
Thursday, eight-thirty in the morning?
So, so the tenth, okay.
Thursday, August tenth, at eight-thirty in the morning.
That works better for me.
Then you'll get an email, send this email.
I'm gonna send this eight-thirty AM. So, the site visit is Thursday, August tenth, at eight-thirty in the morning, and we will meet at the site. Okay, I mean, you guys are gonna need to immortalize this in a motion or something when you adjourn, John.
No, no, before, we, we're not adjourned.
No, no, you're not adjourning, sorry.
Right.
When you're going to make a motion of continuance.
Yes.
Okay, then I will send an email. So, uh, so this is Thursday, okay, and that will give me enough time to also send a notice to the abotters that they're interested, without re-advertising and everything.
You have to put it in the paper.
No.
No, 'cause it's, 'cause we're not, uh, we won't adjourn the meeting.
Oh, okay.
And we'll email the abotters that, just out of courtesy, that we're going to do a site visit.
Uh-huh.
I'll do that tomorrow morning.
Okay, why don't we do this, uh, board moves that we'll have a site visit to the Bridge Twin site on August tenth at eight-thirty AM. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please?
John?
There, we've done it.
Second.
'Cause we can't have Michelle going, going away upset because...
And we can't adjourn, right, until, until Thursday.
So, are we gonna, are you going to wait on any other motions regarding it until after the site visit? Is that what?
Well, we still have, all we can do now is find this complete or incomplete.
Right, right, right. No, I'm asking if they're gonna find it complete or not, that's what...
Well, we haven't gotten to that, we're still working on that.
I take this show across from you.
Uh, do you want me to continue through the, um...
It's just a sign though.
Okay. Okay, proposed site, uh, conditions. Existing circulation. Okay, we did that. Proposed site conditions, location, dimensions, ground floor elevations of any buildings. All lots shall meet the additional, meet the minimum requi- requirements of Article Three. Uh, if a lot on one side of a stream titled Water Road Utilities, et cetera, fails to meet the minimum requirements, not the case. Ratio of lot length to width shall not be more than five to one. Any signs. If any septic systems, the site, the soil's information, there's no lighting. Uh, traffic is addressed, as I recall. No parking, no bike and pedestrian. We have a stormwater management plan. No, no utility plan, 'cause you're not planning on any utilities. Uh, wastewater disposal, none. Drinking water, none. Hydrogeology, uh, only on sites, uh, where there's a common on-site water supply or sewage disposal facility, or any part is located over a significant sand or gravel aquifer. Groundwater impact analysis shall contain the following map, showing basic soil types, depth water table, drainage conditions throughout the site, data on existing groundwater quality, projections of groundwater quality, analysis and evaluation of the effect of the development on groundwater resources, and a map showing location of any subsurface wastewater disposal. Now, did you address groundwater impact?
I didn't, because I believe that's for, typically for, if you're doing mineral extraction or if you're having an engineered septic system.
It doesn't?
It says, that's what it said.
No.
It says it under, um, okay, do you have more information on it? You have to keep going in the ordinance under the actual, the standards, John.
Yeah.
You have more information, and it says, "A project involving common on-site water supplies or sewage disposal system with a capacity of two thousand gallons per day or greater."
Which it doesn't.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so... And then we go to fire suppression. You never know what's in that fill. Landscaping.
It's going to be landscape, all right.
Well, I mean, part of the landscaping is the way the, it's all been done, parking and open space. Critical natural area has been identified. National regi- historic places, you've already, you've sent those letters out.
Yes.
Tabular, number of acres and existing developments, square foot to bill, okay. Easements. Owners association signature block. Obviously, no owners association.
No.
So, anything missing? I don't notice anything. Okay, in that case... With regard to preliminary plan for a major use site development titled Route One Eighty Project for Bridge Twin LLC, proposal being to create a pad site of about one hundred thousand square feet on a twenty-four acre parcel off, off Route One Eighty, Mariahville Road, on Tax Map Fifty, Lot Fifty-Nine in the urban zone. The board finds the plan is complete, noting that there's, that the, there should be a note on the final plan regarding the soil stabilization schedule within six months of substantial completion, and is, and asks the city planner to contact the U- United States Fish and Wildlife Service regarding the project. And the motion. Is there a second?
A second now.
Got a question.
We got you.
Uh, a question regarding the motion. Joe?
Not necessarily the motion. Uh, the issue of the fill that's going on the neighboring property, is that something that would have to appear in a note on the slide? That we make sure that that gets rectified?
Isn't that between owners?
I, I believe it's between owners.
Yeah, it's a civil, it's a civil matter.
It's a civil, it's a civil thing, yeah.
Or uncivil is the case.
Mary.
Uh, so, when mo- motion is made in second, is there any discussion? All in favor of completeness? Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you, Mr. Chairman, make a statement that there was no public here tonight? So, you did not hear all the public here?
Yes, there was, there was no public to, uh, address us.
That's awesome. And then you have my laws to sign?
I gather we do.
You're not adjourning.
But this, oh, yes, the...
We're not adjourning.
This meeting is continued until just after the site visit.
Thursday, August tenth, at eight-thirty AM, at the project location of the, the Route One Eighty project.
Yes, but, but it's not, will not adjourn until that, that part of the meeting is finished.
Okay, and you're gonna sign my laws right now, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.